EMS and doctors, do you not have anything about professionalism in there? Like you have to be professional while working?
So EMS are separate to us, uh, to be clear, but uh, for our doctor SOPs, uh, yes, I believe it's mentioned twice and there's a whole section.
There's a whole section about being professional?
Uh, yes, hold on, let me fill it up. Uh, we have a section called professionalism and consequences.
Okay.
Uh, professionalism was also the second point under job responsibilities.
Okay, can you read that to me by any chance?
Sure. Under job responsibilities, uh, the second bullet point is treat all patients fairly and their injuries effectively while remaining professional.
That's it? That does the only thing?
Then, then professionalism consequences says, while on duty and off duty, you will be representing the ALSNG and your fellow coworkers. You must hold yourself to a degree of professionalism and accountability while on and off duty. You'll be subject to consequences determined by attendings and or the board or directors if their request is not upheld. The ALSNG is a right to work institution and as an employee, the board of directors reserves the right to terminate your employment at any time for any reason. Some actions may result in immediate termination. It goes into that.
Alright.
Yo, who, who transgressed Mike?
Who transgressed? Uh, you do have a doctor that is currently going around egging somebody on. Because they don't see eye to eye, especially when they're in a work environment, they still seem to be doing this. They also do dress up and go around claiming that they have leukemia, uh, as apparently as an act.
Uh, I, I do believe he actually just found out he was sick, um, while he was being treated. I'm assuming Rob Long spoke to you. I promise you that, uh, the big picture of this is far more confusing. I've spoken to every party and every side.
It doesn't, doesn't matter.
Uh, and it has been ongoing for a long time.
He's getting bullied, bro.
I don't care.
Why, why, yeah, why you guys bullying him, bro?
I, I don't, I, I'll be honest, I haven't seen any of that. Montez, uh, as far as I'm aware, has never once reached out to him.
No, it's not just that. I've also been told that he refused medical, which I feel like is a bit of an issue too.
Uh, any doctor is authorized to not treat someone if they're uncomfortable with the situation in any way. They can't deny them treatment entirely. They have to, you know, make sure another doctor is available or Dr. Kate can assist them. Um, but straight from the desk of Derek Shaw, uh, if you're in any reason uncomfortable, you do not have to treat a patient yourself.
Okay, so you think it's fine that there's in a work environment that he's egging somebody on and? Literally.
We're dealing with internally, um, but I'm sure what hasn't passed on is the first day that this happened, um, I spoke to both of them there in person while they were there together. Uh, made Montez apologize for it, explained in front of Rod to Montez why he should not have done that. Uh, and the situation ended fine. The next time I was able to speak to Rod was after he had already come in and stabbed Montez and been trespassed, which I had none of, nothing to do with any of that part. Uh, and what he did was come into the hospital for treatment. I asked, hey, do you need treatment? He said, yes. So we didn't bother him at all. We got someone to treat him. Then he stands there flipping us off, uh, and yelling at me for not listening to him. Even though I had and had forced Montez to apologize, uh, and he came and stabbed him anyway.
And what about the recent incident?
Uh, with the, uh, with the wrench? So I believe Rod was in the hospital, um, upset again, uh, about Montez's behavior. Uh, about the dressing up. I had heard about that, um, that, uh, I had talked to Montez about. He had a pretty different opinion about it, but I still talked to Rod and we had what I thought was a good conversation. Right in the middle of that conversation, uh, Joanna runs up and says that she heard something about Rod. I forget exactly what she said. Uh, it was something, some rude. I don't remember, um. She didn't, she didn't even say where she heard it from. I'm assuming the assumption is Montez, but I haven't even heard that still. Uh, so Rod just cuts off our conversation, goes this motherfucker and runs into the ER and bludgeons him with a wrench. Um, right in the middle of a bunch of doctors and patients. So I go in and hold him up with my gun until the cars arrive. He was beating my doctor on the floor, so I could have fucking shot his ass, but I did not. Out of, uh, an attempt to not escalate it like he continues to do, uh, I decided to just hold him up instead.
No, no, I'm not defending Rod's action here. And I'm not saying that Rod is doing the right thing. But if you have a doctor in a professional environment that keeps egging somebody on, you know, somebody's about to snap at some point.
I understand that. The issue is, um, as far as I'm aware, uh, and I have tried to, uh, talk to Rod about this as well. There was no egging on to get to the stabbing. That was very much, uh, Montez apologized, Montez owned up to what he did. Rod was not happy that it happened at all still and just stabbed him anyway. Um, there might, this might've escalated past that point because Montez is now pissed about being stabbed. Um, but as far as I have been able to tell, and both sides have been able to tell me, Rod over escalated this by himself.
What, what are these two individuals' names?
Rod Long and a doctor, Montez Belair.
Montez Belair, Rod Long.
Hmm, correct.
Okay, uh, you have their numbers?
Uh, I can give you.
I have Montez.
Yeah, I can send you Rod's number.
Are they around right now?
Uh, I don't believe Montez is.
Can we get Montez around?
Yes, almost certainly.
Can we get Rod around?
Let me, let me see if Rod is around.
Yeah, let's get him over here, cause.
Okay.
It sounds like high school, so I'll be the principal.
It is high school. We already.
It really is.
No, 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 no.
We don't need you to be the principal. We need this Montez guy to get in trouble for fucking antagonizing this dude.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like if, if it's escalating to the point where people are holding each other up and punching each other and all that. Why don't they just do mutual combat and be done with it?
Hell yeah, that works for me.
I'm not, I don't mean principals in like talk to them. I mean, principals and tell them either. You do mutual combat, get it out of your system like adults, or you know, we just start pushing ego act on the two of you. It is dumb.
Ego act that motherfucker Rod.
It's dumb at this point.
No, it is.
It is, absolutely.
We told, we told Rod to go through the proper channels with this as well. And the reason I'm bringing up is because somebody said that you guys don't have SOPs in terms of professionalism.
I don't know who you're talking to that's that misinformed, but we absolutely do and we always have. In fact, there, there's another place where it's mentioned, um, if I remember correctly. Cause, uh, that, that was a key point that we wanted to bring up. Oh, there's a whole other section about, um, about being targeted in the hospital. We can send you off duty if you're causing unnecessary risk for other doctors as well, um. Oh, it's, we cover all this.
No, it's, it's fine. I'm just like, if it, if that is the case and there is SOPs for it, then he should be held accountable for being unprofessional. What Rod did is not correct and, and Rod is being chewed the fuck out for being a fucking idiot. Rod is not in the right, but I will say in Rod's case, he doesn't usually go to the extremes, especially not with civilians. And I can vouch for that.
Yo, what was that guy's punishment? Montez.
It's been hard to punish someone where every single time, uh, we find out any proof, uh, about something has happened, which has been a single time. He immediately got bludgeoned with a wrench. Uh, so he has not been on duty since then. The initial time I made him apologize, I had him go to Rod, uh, that first night, uh, and own up to what he had done and apologize for it. Initially, uh, he, he discussed it and he understood and we had, uh, all three of us had a discussion in the ER while, uh, while the party that this situation surrounded was being, uh, being consulted by Pixie.
Hmm. Okay.
I don't think Rod is around.
That's all it was. It was a one situation thing at first.
Alright, well, how about we just tell them to either do mutual combat or, you know, get over it?
Yeah.
Well, mutual, mutual combat or Rod can actually just fucking, uh, was it again restraining order? So they don't fucking talk to each other and just leave it.
Yeah, something.
I don't think people realize Montez isn't trying to talk to him. I found no proof that, I even asked Rod, uh, has he ever contacted you?
No, but that's the thing though. He does, he does it through other people. The person that ran up to him in your case was somebody that apparently was talking to the guy and then ran up to Rod. He's doing it through other people by, and not egging him on directly. It's still unprofessional, but. Again, I'll have Rod do the, go through the proper channel since they're not awake. And I got confirmed, confirmed that you do have SOPs, so.
Yes, we do.
I'm, I'm, I'm past the point of professionalism. How about they're both, you know, older than their teens, so.
Yeah, see, that's, that's kind of like, I don't think I have to handhold them as much as I've been trying to do.
But how they both act, they're not past their teens though.
Yeah, fire them both, dog.
Well, Rod isn't hired. Uh, however, we were going to remove his trespass, uh, until he did this again, so. I genuinely thought things were on better terms. Uh, it is unfortunate that he, uh, instead felt the need to pledge him Montez.
Not my circus, not my monkeys, not yours either. They're adults, figured out.
Yeah, Montez is cool because he gave me the Martin Luther King pass.
Hell yeah.
Does that mean you can say I have a dream?
Uh, yeah.
Nice.
That's pretty good. There you go.
That's a dub.
Uh, EMS question. Are they dropping like flies or what's the status on them currently? Because we keep getting mixed fucking signals about him.
Yeah, every, so I've had random people come up to me and they're like, adoi EMS be quitting. But like every EMS I talked to is like, nah, man.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing for me as well. Um, when you mentioned that last time, I went and talked to, uh, not only their High Command, a couple members of EMS that I've just seen him passing as well. I have not heard any of it. I don't, I don't know where it's coming from.
I got an important question though. Are they, are they hiring for EMS? Is there like an actual issue for that right now?
I, um, I'm actually not a hundred percent sure. Let me see. I know Charlotte Spade was their, um, PNT lead, but she was trying to get hired as a member of PD.
Police cadet.
Yes, mm-hmm. So that might've slowed things down, I'll say, but, uh, that wasn't like, you know, boo hoo, I quit EMS. She just wanted to move on. Uh, it does look like an EMS trainee was hired pretty recently.
Well, uh, I raised EMS pay to thirteen hundred before tax.
Holy shit, okay.
It is a very lucrative thing. Uh, if you want, uh, I know you don't handle hiring.
Yeah.
Forgive it. I'll talk to Abby. I'll talk to Abby.
Yeah, go for it. I'll, I'll make sure they're aware as well when I see, uh, him and Dion, but yeah, that's perfect.
Word.
Hopefully that helps them with it a bit because I, I think it has been an issue, but, um, it's more so, uh, medical is, uh, an unrewarding field sometimes, uh, so I think, uh, as much as I love it, uh, some people just get a little burnt out, so.
Yeah. True, dog.
Yeah, thank you. That makes a lot.
Well, compassion fatigue is a real thing for doctors, right?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect sense, one hundred percent.
We have to be super morbid and fucked up with our, uh, jokes and everything. It's the only way we get through it. We deal with too much.
Hit level eighty-four attack in RuneScape last night.
Oh, good shit.
Yep.
So you're almost halfway there.
Yep. Um, okay, well, meeting started. Uh, let's can, let's go down the freaking, uh, table, okay? Uh, first I'm, I'm finna hit the boys with the classic. PD liaison Dakota, do you have anything to present?
Uh, speak up Dakota.
I can't hear my.
Okay, I just can't hear you.
You're out Dakota?
Oh, okay.
We can't hear you Dakota.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Much better, much better.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I have a couple of things that I would like to bring up. Uh, this is probably something, I don't know at what level this could be addressed. I did talk to the deputy mayor before the, before this, about this. Apparently people are, uh, stealing a lot of helicopters now from the airport.
Uh-oh.
Yep.
Uh, we have no means to, uh, go after them for obvious reasons. And, uh, the only way we can get on ATC is if we drive down to the airport and, uh, link into theirs and tell them to land, which knowing that we can't follow, they don't.
Yo, quick, quick suggesterino. Why don't you guys go steal a helicopter and then chase them?
Or why don't you just shoot them after you warn them to land?
Uh, that seems fair. Can't you do that if you can't pursue?
We have shot at it. Uh, secondary issue, uh, our, our guns are not as effective as you would imagine. So, uh, we are struggling to, uh, take down a helicopter, even if we are hitting tail rotors.
Y'all pay shooters like with Glock's.
It's also.
What, what it is, is probably, it's probably a range issue, right?
Well, but if they're at a range of firearm, then doesn't that mean there's somebody else's problem?
What?
Well, well, by the secondary thing I was gonna raise to that is, uh, we've also had a lot of instances where I put twelve rounds into somebody and then they hit me over the head with a wrench and knock me out.
Oh my god.
Whoa.
Yeah, I, I've hit people in the head before.
If I could blast that bitch.
I, I do try to be blasting and I still get a wrench in the forehead.
Yeah, this doesn't sound like council stuff.
Uh, no, I, I, I will say, um, totally just comment your helicopter, park it at PD and wait for someone to do this shit.
Comment dare one brand PD, alright.
Yeah, fuck it. Yeah, you, look, just make sure it doesn't get blown up so you don't have to pay the owner, you know?
Alright, uh, secondary.
And this is not for your use other than combating helicopters.
Yeah, I understood, understood. Uh, secondary thing is another thing that I spoke to deputy mayor about, the maze bank on Bay City is starting to get robbed. Shock.
Oh no.
Uh.
That's where I get my paychecks. What the fuck?
I know.
They should pick a different bank.
Do we have FDIC insurance?
Fucking better, Jesus.
I sure hope so, guys.
Hold on my money.
Are we losing money?
I sure hope we are, guys.
I sure hope we have it.
Oh no.
Oh boy.
That would be unmanageable forever.
Oh god, it would be. Oh no.
Um, but what I was saying to the deputy mayor is that, uh, people are using dinghies to get away in the canals. Cause the access, uh, appears to be somewhere in the sewers. And, uh, our boats are having a little trouble catching up, but I know I spoke to him about that, but I'm more just bringing it to your attention that that's starting to happen is the, uh, the bank up there is being robbed.
You know, I'm a, I'm a big fan of, uh, shoot their boat.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. It's another, you can't follow them. Hey, you got guns.
Look, I, 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 look, I'm not cop, I'm gonna tell you how to do your job, um. But if you can't chase them, shoot them.
I mean, that used to be a thing back in the day.
Yeah, yeah, we, well, we used to shoot over a lot of different things back in the day, but that has changed to some extent.
Yeah, Dakota, I think, uh, maybe things like this you should bring to your High Command and then they can bring them to the state directly. I don't really know if the council's in a position to handle, you know, the technical specifications of your boats and guns and stuff.
Understood. I just wanted to bring it up because the mayor was here, but noted going forward.
Yeah, no, I support, uh, I support a bit of an escalation right now.
We will treat them if, if needed after the fact, so there you go, just go for it.
When I heard about the helicopter escape, it was, uh, yeah, definitely.
Yo, I didn't speak up.
Oh. Sorry, I was like, yeah, when I, I heard about the helicopter escape, I was like, I figured it was gonna be brought up at some point.
Oh, word? Yeah, there was a fucking helicopter that landed in Legion Square the other day.
Yeah.
Oh, that's lovely. Not dangerous at all.
Alright, uh, and then the last thing was a DOJ question that I brought up to chief justice. So those, I just wanted to make you aware of some of those things. I didn't know.
Holy fuck, Malton's here.
Oh my god.
I was here last week too.
Oh, I just didn't even, holy fuck.
Are you good, Max?
I'm sorry, I just, like, it just clicked with me, Dakota.
It's hilarious.
Oh, you're alright. Uh, no, my last point was already brought up before and, uh, that was it. I just wanted to bring some of those things to your attention, but other than that, I've gotten everything else sorted in the, uh, other avenues that be, so I am good.
Alright, well, as for, uh, my stuff, the, uh, the only thing kind of on, on the radar is, uh, there, there's been some lawyers who have been, uh, grumbling about pay again. I believe that's just in relation to the income tax being adjusted recently though.
Uh, it hasn't been adjusted in like weeks.
May, maybe it's, it's just finally like filtering through and they're just finally noticing it. What, what is the, uh, the income tax act currently?
It's like eight or some shit.
That's not even.
I can go check real quick.
No, it's not bad at all, yeah.
Nah, it's, it's, it's always just, uh, just the standard like pay grumbling. I, I've basically kind of been, uh, placating, uh, a, a little bit, just saying like, hey, the, the pay is the pay for now, you know, maybe they'll change next administration.
I'm not opposed to upping their pay. I could, I, I can do that shit right now, dog. I'm gonna be honest, cause I know that, uh, my wife and I have, have observed that the, they, uh, they're having trouble right now.
Yeah, the lawyers are, yeah.
But see, the thing, the thing is, right, the thing that I've observed is EMS pay has been thirteen hundred for almost two weeks.
Um, it, yeah, it hasn't changed much.
Yeah.
Same with the doctor side, uh, which again, I appreciated a lot for that pay raise, but unfortunately, uh, I mean, the people who are there, uh, it means a hell of a lot to them, which is the same thing I always thought, but it certainly hasn't caused people to work more.
Fuck it, I'll, I'll raise their pay to one thousand an hour. Fuck it, I think they deserve it.
I, I, I think that that is appreciated. The, the only thing I, I will say, and this is, uh, may, maybe this is an issue that might be present in other professions, but if I'm, I'm being perfectly honest, a, a lot of the lawyer pay issue is for, uh, self-inflicted wounds. Uh, people just aren't charging for their services.
True.
Yeah, exactly.
We can't.
Lance, there's, there's also an issue right now that I was told by the lawyers is that Oliver is undercutting everybody on contracts, saying that he will, fifty dollars for contracts.
Yeah, what's up with that?
I heard that from Ledsen, yeah, people are undercutting hard, so it just wasn't worth doing.
Oliver is charging fifty bucks, so now everybody else who is charging more is just getting nothing.
I mean, it's a classic race for the bottom. I, I don't think setting a mandatory minimum i- is appropriate.
We had that for expungements for a reason, right? Giving that money to lawyers because otherwise, right, right, it was just a way to give them that money.
Expungement is a, is a state.
In the past, right? I'm saying, but in the past, right, we had the, uh, lawyers got twenty-five hundred dollars for expungements. That fee was for them to ensure that they had that money and it was a minimum fee to file, right? I'm just saying that we had a standardized like minimum before.
I, I don't think mandatory minimum is appropriate specifically for contracts because, uh, that, that goes into the bucket of how we enforce it. Expungements, they have to go through judges, they're very limited, they're very trusted, that, that is like an official government facet, uh, function. Whereas realistically speaking, if we mandate minimums for legal services, uh, you know, e- everyone knows a lawyer, you know, everyone's gonna under report. Um, it's like, if, in a vacuum, like, sure, I, I'd like to set a mandatory minimum for contracts in, in this case, but, uh, in practicality sense, like, how, how do you enforce that? Or make sure that that thing's up to date? And I, I just don't think you can. If, uh, people are racing to the bottom, if Oliver is charging fifty bucks for a contract, I mean, shit, man, Oliver's not around twenty-four seven.
What I've heard is that people are saying that they'll wait to, to, to spend this, which I suppose is their prerogative, um.
Yeah, that's also their, their prerogative, right? I, I, I don't know, it's.
I understand what you're saying, but I think regulation by enforcement is still a mechanism.
It is a mechanism. I, I don't know if it, it's specifically that, although I mean, like Crane, you're, you're, you're in the legal world, uh, a, a little bit, like, what, what are your thoughts on, on mandatory minimums for legal services?
Uh, depends on the service, I guess, and I don't know why I would need to regulate, you know, free market.
That's a little where I'm at, right? Like, if, if the, the pay is being bumped, that, that might help a little. I don't know how, uh.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I, I don't know how popular the, the contract business is, let's say, but, uh, contract is, is just one facet of being a lawyer, uh, it doesn't change the issue of lawyers historically like to race for the bottom. And I, I don't, I, I, I don't know how to solve that on institutional level, I'm gonna be honest.
So, you say you don't know how to solve it, but I feel like the solution's right there, right? And I know you guys are, you're saying that it doesn't work. Why doesn't the mandatory minimum work?
Because people just won't follow it.
Well, why don't we make it illegal for people to not follow it?
Oh.
Hmm. Because then you have to investigate and charge for it and, and all that other stuff.
That would screw over lawyers, I suppose, and we already don't have many, so I'll, I'll give the benefit of the doubt in there.
The number of lawyers is, is not an issue. It's like, the lawyer pool is similar to PD in the sense that there, there, there's always gonna be people who wanna be lawyers. It, it just comes down to the quality you want and, and the function you want them to serve in the city. Um.
They, they said that adoption fraud was unenforceable. I even said so. However, the number of people who got arrested for that shit threw the roof.
That's a good point and it was hilarious.
So, yeah, I'm thinking like, you could, like cops could set up sting operations on these fucking lawyers to see if they're crooked, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's a lot of potential there. Like, like, you know, people fucking, like, does confidentially, confidentiality apply to, uh, the person who is hiring a lawyer?
It would not, it, it would not apply during a sting operation, but if, if you are discussing something with a lawyer, that is like.
Privileged.
By definition, privileged, which is similar to the.
You can snitch on your lawyer, yes.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, you know, people could just like, I feel like there's a lot of potential here, potentially, potential. You know what I'm saying? Fucking, uh, we, we can't just give up if, if the prospect of more work is like wagging in our face. I, like, like, for example, we got, we got something we're gonna present now, uh, or not now, but like at this meeting, uh, for the, the motherfucking grime workers that are dropping their trailers off on the shoulder of Polito and other places.
Yes, thank you. I could not believe this shit.
It is so bad.
Think about this reaction though, okay? And then consider for a moment, how would the police ever catch someone doing this?
I think I have a. They have to stake out, you know?
Right, so how would a person ever catch a lawyer undercutting, uh, and not following the mandatory minimum?
Yep, sting operation.
Uh, it's just, it's a matter of effort.
It's, it's also, I, I, at a, at a baseline, I, I also don't really think it, it's our place to regulate mandatory minimums for legal services. Now, if that's a route that we're wanting to go for various industries, let's say, then I, I, I could support that in general, but I, I don't think it's our job as the council to say, uh, hey, uh, legal community, uh, quit undercutting each other, uh, we're gonna come in like your parents and, and set mandatory minimums. Is, is it, is it a big enough issue to where we have to come in and legislate it? That, that, that's where I'm at.
I, I will, I, I will concede that I don't think it is a big enough issue right now.
Okay.
Uh, and that's because I barely see Oliver around. I don't, uh, I might, it might be different for my wife because she's awake during the day a lot more often than I am.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll certainly, uh, let, let's say kick around the, the prospect of mandatory minimums. I believe at one point I, I did in the past. But, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm just not sure if it's like a legislative route, but I'll.
Has anybody spoken to Oliver and said, hey, maybe don't do this?
He fucking lied about it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go raise, I'm gonna go raise lawyer bail real quick.
Uh, Lance, I would talk to Grayson Roman about this when you get a chance.
Is he the one who flagged it up?
Um, they're two of the ones who did bring it to my attention. I'm trying to remember, there was several.
I, I know Ledsen mentioned something.
Ledsen did as well, yeah, Ledsen.
On his exit interview, but Ledsen should like, never see Oliver in, in mind. Uh, maybe, maybe he does sometimes.
No, they did, yeah. It was like end of Ledsen shift, he would run into Oliver. I just wanna say, I don't wanna, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do mandated minimums for everything, for all services, right? Cause I would hate to tell someone they can't do pro bono if they want to.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I, I'm, I, I'm, trust, I'm, I'm, I was, I'm very much aware of that. I'm not saying it should be on everything, but maybe some things, right? And if you can't afford it, maybe you shouldn't be participating in that for certain things, right?
I, I don't think it's that people can't afford it. I, uh, I, I just think it's people who either won't want a good deal or who are getting paid, uh, let, let's say in other ways, right? Like, maybe, maybe you're, you're not charging for the contract, but you're, uh, you know, you're getting a backend deal where you're like that, that business is lawyer, they're gonna keep coming to you for legal services related to that business, right?
And that just kinda seems retainer-y, doesn't it?
Right, which is, you know, once again, like another, not issue, but, uh, you, you know, if, if I'm, if I'm not paying for this contract, but I'm paying you, uh, five K a month as like a general retainer, like, is that something that, that's covered under this mandatory minimum legislation? Like, I'll, I'll, I'll kick around feelers. I'll, I'll, I'll see what people are, are, are thinking in general. I just, uh.
I'm just gonna say, when they sign off on a contract, they're essentially notarizing the contract, right? Having a standardized minimum notarization fee is not too crazy.
But, um, o- other than like general pay issues, yeah, there's, uh, there, there's nothing else really. Uh, civilian oversight board has received a couple of complaints. We're still kind of working through like the, uh, the kinks of like the, uh, the pipeline to, uh, to be actioning those and such. But, uh, we'll have some test cases basically to look at, uh, next week.
Molten.
Yeah, what's up?
How do you feel about Archie Archer willing to completely abandon his role, uh, to run for mayor?
Damn.
Archie Archer never wanted to be on the civilian oversight board.
Did he not?
Yeah.
No, he wanted power, bro.
He just wanted power. He just wants.
He's gone. Yeah, no, that makes sense.
I mean, he, he admitted to me that this was, he, he saw it as a, a political stepping stone, um. I, I mean, I, it is a, a little disheartening, but I, I'm not, uh. I, I, I'm not really ju- judging motives, shall, shall we say, right?
Like, uh, suggestion, I mean, it's your, it's your baby, so, uh, replace him with the fourth place.
I, I was just about to say that, yeah. I mean, if he's already looking past it, then why don't we give it to somebody who actually wanted to be on it?
Yep.
I agree.
Honestly, fair.
Well, that's our suggestion, obviously, you know.
And, and has he, I'll, 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 uh, I'll, I'll, I'll wait till he actually declares candidacy for.
He did.
He's already, he's already campaigning.
Yep.
I, I know there's a couple actually, because when, when does, but I guess my thing is like for like a, 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 officiality, let's say, when does the, uh, when, when does the clearing season actually start? Is that set in stone or anything?
The signups are going, I, I believe they went up on the ninth last time, so they will go up on the ninth this time.
Okay.
Yeah, no, he's, he's advertising himself in the yellow pages as running for mayor, Molten.
Yeah, yeah, and he's actively going and speaking to, to, to groups and.
Yep, he reached out to me today.
Get rid of this clown.
Yeah, cause he's.
Yeah.
He's no longer paying attention to what he should be, so give it to somebody who will.
Um. What, uh, would, shh, 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 did you have anything, Molten?
Not, not for like legislations, just general updates on like the, uh, the pay in the civilian oversight board.
Okay, uh, Cantor, you got anything?
Uh, nothing to propose today. Um, still working on studies for the scheduling of weed. Um, but I think, uh, from my discussions with people, I think, uh, a lot of that would be based around the things that PD is aware of.
You say Wade?
My accent's a little too strong, weed.
Weed, sorry.
Wade, yeah, it's, sorry about that.
All good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but yeah, that's the only thing to schedule so far, so just working on that still.
Alan, do you have anything to present?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I see we got, uh, pay me, uh, we got park.
Parking and assholes.
And assholes.
Fan of assholes.
Yep.
Big fan of assholes.
Big fan of assholes. Down street.
Didn't think those words would come out of my mouth today, but you know, here we are.
Do we, uh, where do you wanna start?
Alan?
Oh, yeah, so pay me, I noticed, uh, I'm not getting paid in accordance to my role on city council. I'm getting paid as a judge.
Oh, so not fair. Okay, well, I mean, what, what do your expenditures look like these days?
What do you mean?
I, I was just like, you know, like, are you, are you, are you not getting paid like a livable wage or?
No, it's about equity.
Oh, okay, well, I'm owed fifty thousand dollars from the state, then, so is my wife.
Why is that?
Uh, for the, uh, for our audit and, uh, interviewing for the, uh, PCP and selecting the, um, chief of police.
Alright, so those duties were part of what?
Uh, part of the PCP.
Which was a power granted to what office?
The mayor's office.
Right, so if you are the mayor, then ostensibly wouldn't a power granted to you be responsibility?
Um, yeah, I suppose, but at the same time, w- w- if you apply that logic to the people that were hired to do the audit, wouldn't you say also that that's their responsibility once they are hired to do so?
Yeah, but hired means you'd get paid compensation.
I, was I not, am I not getting paid for being the mayor?
You are, that's what I'm saying.
Alright, well.
It is already part of your job description to do that because it is a power granted to your office. What I'm saying is, is basically the state and the council is part of that action, added responsibility, which you already paid for as part of your job description. What I'm saying is that I hold two roles, much like Cantor, much like Dakota, let's say, much like Molten.
What are your two roles?
I am both a judge and a city council member.
Okay.
So I am getting paid only as a judge, whereas the other people at the table are getting paid as city council members.
It's your responsibility to do those things. That's a responsibility you took on yourself as well.
Right.
So why do you think you should be paid more?
No, I'm saying I should be paid the same.
Same as who?
The other city council members.
How much are they getting paid, Alan?
I don't know, you control that.
How much are you getting paid per hour, Alan? I, I gotta know.
No, you control that.
He got his money, like he did the audit too?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Uh, when's the last time you picked up your paycheck for Bay City?
Uh, today.
Uh, and how much did you get paid?
Uh, like fourteen K or something.
Okay, um, so after this meeting, uh, or what, like, I assume you'll remember the time that you got your paycheck, right?
Sure.
Um, after this meeting, what you could do is you could go down to Bay City, um, and you can figure out how much exactly you're making. And then maybe suggest a, an actual number to have your pay raised to, because right now, I, I don't, I, I do even, you don't know how much you're getting paid per hour.
I'm getting paid what judges get paid.
Okay, uh, but my point is, is if you were, if you were doing, look, I, I value a judge's work extensively because my wife has im- imprinted into me how difficult and, and, and how much work goes into doing that. That said, um, how much work have you done in the realm of actual judgment? You've done some bench trials and stuff like that, right?
What do you mean?
Well, I'm just wondering, how, like, how many hours do you have signed in?
I don't know. What does that have to do with it?
Well, just take a guess, just like a random guess.
What does that have to do with this?
I am wondering how I can justify a pay raise for you if you are not putting in the hours and the time.
I don't, I'm asking for an equitable hourly rate. You're misunderstanding, I think.
I'm not misunderstanding at all, Alan. I, I just.
Uh, I think you are, because your questions are irrelevant to the point I'm making.
This isn't a courtroom, Alan. I'm trying to figure out how it is.
Right, but we have to get to the same page, right? So we have to understand what we're communicating about. And if we're talking past each other, which it seems like we are, then that's a problem.
Sign in as a council member, though.
I cannot. That's what I'm trying to say.
You set up all of us to be able to do that. You, you assigned us the ability to do that.
Max, I did not.
Who did?
Hey, so here is the thing. I can hire myself as a council member.
Yeah.
I suppose, and then I could sign as that alternatively for the meetings and such.
Yep.
I'm doing it through the proper channels because that would be an executive action that would be wrong. I'm simply asking for the council to allow me to do what is equitable. That's it. Uh, I am not in an authoritative executive body when it comes to pay because you control things like that. So I am coming to you, acknowledging the fact that I cannot, even though I have the technical ability, I can and should not do it on my own, so I'm doing it through proper channels. That's what I'm saying, you're misunderstanding.
Okay, it, my counterpoint was simply, you don't know how much getting paid, you're paid, you're getting paid per hour. You can't tell me that.
I know that I'm getting paid.
You can't, you can't tell me how many hours you've worked in the last week. So why, why is pay an issue to you right now?
Because for the time I am getting paid, when I'm doing the same work as other city council members, I am getting a lesser rate.
Okay, uh.
That is all I am pointing out, and I'm asking for the ability as a group for me to make that potentially equitable. That's it.
Okay, uh, I mainly just playing devil's advocate. I really don't give a shit if you get paid more money.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't either. I'm just, I'm just explaining that, like, the, the, uh, the points you're raising, I ain't doing what I'm saying. It's just.
Well, no, they, they, I mean, my point is that if you cannot quantify to me how much money you're making per hour or how many hours you've worked per week, how is it that your pay could be such a pressing issue to you that you would present it to the council right now?
Because it's a matter of rate. And also, as I said to Cantor before this, no one brought anything to me this week to bring up, so I found things to bring up on my own behalf.
Love it. I actually do love that.
Which I did not do for the first, I don't know how long, so.
Like, five weeks. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of you getting a raise. I gotta be honest.
I, I, I just want the ability, can I create the ability for me to sign in as a chief justice instead of a judge?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fuck you.
Cool, thank you. Um. What would be a reasonable rate for that? Probably like, uh.
Whatever the council gets paid.
So, I don't actually know the base number that the council's being paid. I can only adjust a percentage of that. So, it's whatever we last, so whatever we last voted on it for it to be. Excuse me.
I think it was eight fifty.
No, uh.
But it's gone up since then because of whatever.
Last, after the last one where we gave ourselves raises.
Oh, I forgot about the two hundred, yeah.
Thousand, a thousand dollars.
Max, I sent you.
Say what I wasn't hearing? Hell, yeah. Alright.
Yeah.
Why, Mike?
I sent, I sent you an email with all the numbers.
Ooh.
You can get the ex- actual base on everything.
Uh, city council is eight hundred before tax.
Oh, then it didn't, never got changed, yeah.
Uh, ju- judge is nine hundred before tax. So actually, you've been making more money than the city council.
Not if, not if it's like whatever triple XP weekend or whatever has been going around.
Oh, that was just for the PD.
Oh, I thought city council made a bunch of money this recently.
Oh, wait, yeah, hold on, um.
Wait, what?
Let me, let me do some math, hang on.
Nah, Alan's right. Council has been making more than him.
Oh.
Um.
Wait, what? This says doctors are getting, wait, doc, oh, DOC, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, I think they're getting paid the least because it's just inherently, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, they don't deserve money.
Yeah, they're chaos.
Yeah, raise it. Um, it, I mean, it's, I don't really know the particulars about adding another role like that, so, but I mean, I'm for it. I don't give a.
Yeah, okay. I can get it figured out. I just wanted your guys' permission as a group, so I'm not doing things on my own, that's all.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, sounds good.
Alright, so pay me is approved. I will get equitable compensation in terms of role, um. Let's see. Parking got resolved. Uh, that was again, part of the same issue because I signed in as a judge and judges got removed from the city council shared parking. I couldn't take out the car anymore. Uh, but Michael's working on that. And then, uh, oh, asshole. Uh, yeah, I was walking to the bank today because I like to walk because it's good for my knees, because I'm old and they're bad. And, uh, I was walking down, uh, to get some bird to throw, or some, well, bird, some fucking, uh, you know, breadcrumbs to throw the birds down there and, well, you know, back in the day, I, you know, used to read a lot and I'd sit at the cafe and, you know, sometimes, you know, it's kind of like slow reading, you know, like Tale of Two Cities and such, and, well, I'm, I guess I just got immersed at some point in, you know, the sort of existential evaluation of, you know, my place and everything and, you know, I'm out here throwing these breadcrumbs, these birds, and they're finding more happiness than I think I'll ever find in any kind of.
Alan.
Facet.
Who hurt you, darling? What's wrong?
Yeah, what, what?
I was enjoying his story.
Oh, yeah, uh, so we were in the bank, right? I was walking in the bank, uh, my knee was hurting and I, oh, I'm, I'm, I said, remind him, I call him a PCP. Um. Anyway, uh, I was walking in the bank and my knee was hurting, uh, and, and, okay, so I, I get there and I get my money and then I'm like, okay, I'm gonna walk back and I walk back. And a tow truck was on the sidewalk going like a hundred miles an hour, almost ran me over, had like a bright green cab with purple headlights. Uh, and I was thinking to myself, I thought a thousand dollars and four points on your license was like a lot of threat.
It is.
But if they don't care and they're just driving a hundred miles an hour on the sidewalk and swerving oncoming lanes and, uh, do they not care? Is that not enough fear, you know? Like, do we need more fear? Like, what do I do? Because that guy did not give a fuck. He didn't even stop. He didn't say like, holy shit, are you okay? I'm so sorry. He just fucking kept going. He yelled sorry while speeding by. I barely heard it.
Yeah, I got bulldozed by a tow truck.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I, I just.
Pretty bad.
I feel like something, uh, maybe we need to like, can you do your quoted thing with PD, but just for that? I don't know. It just, it seems like.
Ooh.
For like the, the commercial.
They need to control commercial vehicles. I, I am goddamn sick of walking around, because look, I, I may be one of few people, and that's fine. Uh, but I enjoy walking around and I enjoy, you know, bicycling around and taking things slower. And it is fucking crazy that for me to walk from the apartments to my workplace, I almost get run over like three times by a grime truck or a group six truck or a tow truck or, you know, a sanitation truck.
Yep.
We have to control these people.
Wheelers, Jesus.
I mean, yeah, well, yeah, isn't that under, uh, reckless driving and the, uh.
That's, but that's my, that my point is.
There needs to be something more than that.
Laws are harsh already. Are the laws not being enforced? Are people not focusing on that?
I guess.
You know, maybe Dakota has some ideas there.
I mean, we write a lot of speeding tickets, uh, commercial vehicles. Uh, I would have to look into whether or not the vehicle's being pulled over are commercial. I will say, uh,
Honestly. Alright, go ahead, Malcolm.
No, 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 I was gonna say, people might be more inclined to go, you know, are trying to get the car that's going a hundred and thirty as opposed to the grime van that's going ninety in the city.
They don't even have to be going ninety, though. If they're just like on a sidewalk or cutting corners on their turns, that would be enough in theory.
Yeah, uh, I mean, personally, I haven't seen a lot of, uh, vehicles that are used commercially do things like that. But it's obviously, you know, if, uh, if the chief justice is seeing it, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. If people are being pulled over, I'd be interested to see how many times people are actually be, have been charged with, uh, with the commercial vehicle charge, so I can look into that, but, uh, maybe that's the issue.
I mean, I can tell you right now. You can too. You guys don't know that. Let's go incidents, hit advanced search and search by the charge.
I mean, given the fact that they're driving these giant trucks, you know, that are far more dangerous than the average vehicle. And I just feel like they should be held to.
It's, the charge is not being used enough clearly because since March twelfth, there have been seven instances of this.
That's it?
Yeah.
Hell, I see seven instances walking down the street, you know, in five minutes.
Yeah, the charge is just not being used enough. Cause it, very clearly, these people are doing this. I don't know if it's just there's other priorities or what, but, you know, eh, it is something that I think deserves to be addressed because it, it is fundamentally a ridiculous thing for these gigantic, you know, multi-ton death fucking machines to, to just go everywhere at a hundred miles an hour. It's crazy.
I got bulldozed by a tow truck coming down the highway in my weevil today on the way here. So, and the motherfucker didn't even pause, just literally yeeting myself and two local cars into the guardrails. It just kept going.
Have to avoid about four different tow trucks per drive down from Polito to here.
Yeah, now that you mention it, actually, we were, we were chasing a car.
Swerving in the oncoming lanes.
Right in front of us.
Running every red light, going eighty, ninety miles an hour. It, it's gotta, it's gotta get fixed.
When I was still driving my motorcycle, I'd probably have been bulldozed by a fucking truck at least like, wait, I would say, it's like two times a day, two times a day. They, uh, they're insane.
Siobhan, you got bulldozed like two days ago by.
I know, I know.
Yeah, so clearly, Dakota, uh, I don't, I don't know, because four points to me seems very harsh because if you get four points, uh, just for the enhancement charge, and the primary charge is, let's just say it's first degree speeding, the officer chooses not to give like the reckless driving felony. But say it's first degree speeding, that's seven points.
Yep.
So you get caught doing that three times, you lose your license. But that charge and those points mean nothing if it's not being used because for this to, you know, have been around for that long, and it's been used seven times since March twelfth. I mean, that's a month. Seven times in a month is really bad.
Once every three days, yeah?
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is the kind of charge that until the behavior is corrected, you should probably see, you know, couple of these a shift, right? At least, you know, three a shift or something.
Okay, I will.
Like, I, I would imagine, if you, if it was something that was being even remotely considered and prioritized, that seems, you know, kind of reasonable.
Understood. I will, uh, communicate that and let everybody know.
Yeah, okay. I'll go by shift three and I'll make a comment tonight. Um, maybe I'll wake up and go to shift one, but, yeah, I just. Yeah, I just want to bring that up because I think that that's an issue that, uh, everyone in the city deals with.
Yeah, I can make announcements too now for PD, so I can also send it out as soon as this is over.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Uh, and then obviously the ongoing situation with trying to rebalance the entire penal code is still a project. I've solicited preliminary feedback from some judges. Uh, I've opened the door to others if they want to contribute by doing their own efforts. Uh, but I'm trying to, you know, do it right the first time, so it's taken a while. If you guys in particular have any charges or any, you know, things that you feel are not things you want to bring to the council because there may be. More niche or it's an adjustment rather than a full change. Uh, I would welcome any kind of documented commentary on that. I documented, I mean, definitely send me an email or a text or something. Uh, so I have a record of it that I can reference later.
I will get on that. I already have some that people have brought up.
Perfect. There's some phone call.
Dakota, do you have any idea how, if you guys have ever pulled anyone over for the VDM Act at all?
That is another thing I can look at. I will say it's been, uh. I don't know if people have said this, but there was a period there where nobody could get their car repaired. I don't know how that is now. I haven't had to go get a repair. Uh, but I am not sure and I will find out.
Okay, I'll bring it up next week. In that case, as it is right now, I guess it doesn't. Make sense.
That all you had, Green?
Yeah, my stuff, um, Alex, I didn't get a chance to meet with you prior. Anything I need to bring up on behalf of the clerks?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Oh, internal. Okay, good. And yeah, it's all DOJ said. Also, we do have that panel, I believe was it Kanter volunteered to hear that with, uh?
If they didn't post availability by today, I'm just gonna schedule it for based on, uh. Yeah, what I know we're gonna be available for.
Yeah, I should be fully available to just make it happen.
Cool. Wasn't looking, looking at scheduling it for Tuesday, uh, this upcoming Tuesday? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. As long as after seven Eastern.
Yeah, I got you. I know your schedule. All right, perfect.
Yes, Eda, do you have anything?
Um, I don't have anything to propose, but, um, I've been mainly busy, uh, dealing with, uh, event things. Um, Andy conducted her week-long, uh, the games event, which just ended on Friday. Uh, it had a wonderful turnout and, uh. Yeah, so I did that. Um, I've also reached out to a couple of other people. I spoke to. Michael about possibly installing a microphone at Bahama Mama's. Um. I spoke to Kermy Fulker about a, um, sanitation drive of sorts because apparently. There's an issue with trash building up down in the sewers and which. We have a bit of an issue considering that it's felony trespassing to go down into the sewers. Uh, you know, we, we could make an exception for sanitation workers, but then what's to stop people from just going in, signing in and then going down into the sewers? So, um. I don't know exactly how to go about, uh, circumventing that.
Sewer passes.
No, not gonna work.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I mean, is, is the trash causing like blockage? Is there really an issue with just letting the trash pile up in the sewer?
I mean. I would think after a while that it would just start to give people constant headaches, you know, the smell and, you know. Because from what I was told, uh, Kermy said, uh, that the couple of times that he had been down there before, you know. It was deemed a felony, uh. He said that there were literally, there's like a, apparently a pit down there, um. But it's like literally full of trash.
Yeah, I've seen that pit before. Cool.
Yeah, so. I've been trying to think of a way, uh, you know, to possibly come up with something that is monitored by. You know, either, you know, ourselves or, you know, trusted government employees to kind of monitor specific. Entrances for the sanitation crews to go down for, uh, you know, a, a limited period of time to try and, you know. And then we give them like a bonus for their time, uh, on top of what they earn, you know, just from the materials.
Operation sewer cleanup.
Yeah, I, uh, I'm still trying to iron out the details of it, uh.
Basically, uh, anyone in the city can pick up these bags now. Initiative to get everyone down there and be like, hey, grab a bag and then drop it on the surface.
So do we just deem it for like one specific, you know, time period like, hey, right now. Is the only time that you can go down there without getting hit with felony trespassing?
Is it, is it illegal right now? Has it been posted?
I don't really know. I know everyone's aware of it. They've been yelling about it a lot, but I don't remember.
Yeah, word spread real quick on that one.
Yeah, we put signups, signs up on the entrances so people knew not to go down.
Yeah.
We kind of looped it in with an existing charge, so nothing was gonna be posted.
Yeah, because it was deemed, uh, you know, public utility, so being in there is trespassing, even though apparently people live down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a, I had some EMS talking about how one of them lives down there and I just had to tell them there's no way I can endorse that. I, I did test in down there. So there's radioactivity down there. It's not safe. Uh, so, um, I told them I couldn't really help them. Sorry.
You got EMS that lives in the fucking sewers?
Apparently, um, but I'm, I'm not gonna fight to do that. Maybe they should learn to live elsewhere.
Yeah, what? There is a strange attachment to living in the sewers.
There really is. Some people are very attached. It was almost like the adoption stuff where.
Like. I, there, there was a culture. There's no culture anymore. They're like, there was, there was a bunch of weird fucking degenerate. Like social reject sewer people that had been down there for years.
Yeah, I actually met a few of them.
Yeah, like dope, that, that's the culture. Their culture's dead.
There was a guy who couldn't even be. Yeah. Yeah. There was a guy who couldn't even breathe the air up here because he was so used to the toxins down there.
That feels like a great example of why it is not safe.
I know.
Healthcare liaison who, who did tests and all that down there, uh, no one should be going down there unless they are, uh, in a bunch of, uh, like. Protective gear, uh, under very limited conditions.
For those of us with common sense, but you know. But yeah, so like I said, uh, I did speak to Kermy. Um, I am trying to sort out something. Uh, to try and alleviate the trash issue of the sewers, but, you know, that's gonna be interesting.
He messaged me too. Hold on, let me read what he said.
Yeah, he told me, he told me about the conversation that he had with you and the text messages, so.
Two days ago. Well, first of all, he showed me the heat map of trash.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he said, I need to work a deal with the city slash state, showed me the heat map. He said, I need to clean these. My OCD. I said, I wonder if some of those are coming from the sewers. I said, talk to Eda, maybe arrange a trash gathering event. She will probably compensate you. Uh, he said, I am convinced that ninety percent of trash is either in the sewers or houses. And then he said in all caps, I tried talking to Eda. Issue is people's houses. It's not an issue anymore, fortunately. Uh, I need you to like. Let me sieve raid. I'll roll a D twenty. Then he showed me the D twenty.
I told him there was no way in hell that we were doing that, but yeah, now, now it's not an issue.
A six out of twenty, which I don't, I really don't know, but then he said, never mind, this convo never happened. I said, LaMao. Uh, in parentheses, I didn't actually laugh out loud. Uh, I said, people would be super paranoid about letting you in their house to pick up trash, but it is a problem. I wish those bags would go away in people's houses, uh, which come true. Uh, I'm, he said, I'm more concerned about the headache TBH, a valid concern that. Um. And I, I think, why don't we arrange a time next week where we get everyone together? Uh, we drop the, the trespassing, felony trespassing. Uh, we, uh, we just get everyone in the city, go down there and just grab a trash bag and then bring it up to a bunch of, uh, things up on the surface. It's gonna be chaos though.
It is. That's, that's the other thing. It's like trying to manage it in a way that won't. Basically be like, hey, here's a whole bunch of money criminals coming rob everybody.
Yeah.
Because we can't have nice things in the.
Like, we can get some cops down there too. I don't know. Well, we need them to patrol, right? Well. What about patrol? I said, we need them to patrol, right? Uh, yeah, true. I mean, one or two cops though, uh, for that, um, you know. Uh, you know, maybe the ones that like to sit on the side of the road and do traffic citations can spare some other time to sit on the side of the sewer and make sure no one's killing each other.
Yeah, could do. That's what I had a brief little, you know, I was spitballing ideas and, you know, just trying to like designate. You know, certain government employees who would want to volunteer to like watch the entrances because I want to make sure that, you know, people aren't trying to like. You know. Get over on the system as people love to do and have people who actively participate in actually cleaning the trash, you know. Be rewarded for their time on top of what they're earning, you know. Uh, and not be robbed, so.
Well, uh, well, I'll organize something for. Next week. Uh, I'll request that the chief of police give me like one or two cops to station at the top of these manholes.
Okay.
To, uh, you know, receive people that maybe are wounded or, uh, to solve. They could give us security, yeah. Yep, uh, keep them from going down there because I don't want them to catch the fucking malaria or whatever the fuck's going on down there.
Yeah.
And then we just have people fan out, go down there and get bags. Uh, I'll set it for maybe next Thursday. We can do this.
Okay.
Uh, and I'll make so, I'll make a couple of state announcements and whatever else. Maybe I'll, I'll get Kermy to promote it too. Um, yeah, I'll set a time and date after this meeting. You know, a crazy idea. If the sewers are dangerous. And you don't want to expose people to it, but we have this problem with the trash, right? Uh, why don't we allow Bobby and Carmine to put ankle bracelets on people? And then they escort them down the sewers and make the inmates pick up trash. Good idea. The problem is that, um, they might not be detained for long enough to like, you know, eventually they could be like, hey. I want to go home and then they're like. Yeah, and you know, and that's fair, right? I'm just saying the option, right? Cause there may be some people who would like to go pick up trash, Bobby and Carmine. I can't imagine why. Yeah. But, you know. I mean, I'm down. I think that's a great idea. Or maybe they could use it to haze their new tryouts and hires, right? They, they, if there's no inmates, they make the lower DOC guards go pick up trash. And Bobby and Carmine can live out their authoritative fantasies over their employees. Speaking of which.
They sort of did that yesterday.
Oh, God. I do have something tied into.
Hi, Booby.
Crane.
Okay.
We were talking to them because they want to really use their bus up there, uh, to transport, I guess, or pick up inmates from PD. But seeing as that's outside their zone. And I talked to Beric about this. They said that PD would have to. To, what, follow them all the way up to the prison? Is this something we would want them to do to pick up inmates and just take them back to. The Bolingbrook? Or do we not care about that?
Hold on, we gotta fucking slap hands. In you, alright? Fuck, buddy. Alright? Boom. You got this. I don't have any. Like, hey, oh, you got this, Bobby! You got this, Bobby! You got this! Okay, hey Bobby, we were just talking about something that you could do with, uh, your DOC recruits.
Speak up, Bobby.
Speak up.
Uh, we actually healed the DOC's first boot camp. It was a ninety-nine percent attrition rate. A lot of. A lot of people died that day. A lot of trainees died that day, but, uh, there were some that made the cut. Approximately six made the cut.
Is one of them called Dizzy? You don't even know, motherfucker?
Nobody but that name.
Oh, interesting, because he, he thought he passed.
Is he? Well, if I don't remember, he probably didn't pass. Probably wasn't cool then.
Yeah, fair. Uh, before you go over that, um. We were thinking about having you slap ankle bracelets on prisoners and then clean up the sewers with them.
Mister Mayor. I think that we should not only slap an ankle bracelet on them, but we should chain them all up, kind of like one of those lines, like. When they're like. Yeah, chain gang. We should make them a, I don't know, like a work on the casino or something. We should make them a mine, uh, mine like. Like diamonds or something. I, I don't know. What is the, what is the city? City need diamonds or something?
Always need diamonds.
They yearn for the mines.
Um, well, let, let this be a launching point for that then. Sewer cleanup, um. Have you had, uh, are you having any trouble with those buses by chance?
Buses are, don't operate.
Okay, so they're just like inoperable right now?
You can lockpick it. Uh, we, we can, uh, lockpick the bus, uh, I got, something's wrong with the transmission or something. It just doesn't go forward.
Okay.
It'll back up and not forward.
Uh, oh, wow.
Uh, are you, are you willing to, uh, start bringing people down into the sewers and having them pick up some trash?
Mister Mayor, I'd be willing for, uh, anything, uh, the amazing council would, uh, what, any trash the council would give me.
Okay, just an option, Bobby. You know, we were just thinking, you know, we, we have a problem with trash in the sewers and. You have both, you know, low-rung employees and inmates who you control and. You know, I might give you something to, you know, have them do.
Anyway, you can get the police to not stick their nose in what I do in the sewers then, because, uh, I guarantee you, the day this happens, uh.
You'll, uh, you'll be. You'll be given an exception on the felony trespassing stuff. Yeah. If, 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 if this occurs, this will be something where, you know, we will go announce it at PD meetings. It'll be communicated to high command through Dakota. And, you know, other city council members. Uh, when you, you know, as long as there's clear communication ahead of time, everything'd be fine.
What about a unruly, what about unruly inmates that, uh, that need to be punished in the sewers for not, uh, working hard enough? Am I gonna get a charge for beating them or shooting them?
No, because they, they're escaping at that point, right? Are they? Well, Bobby, you wouldn't be, uh. Carrying a gun, you know, outside the prison, would you?
Oh, no, 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 no. Carmine holds my gun for me.
Right.
It's, it's a communal gun.
Yeah, because you don't have a license to possess a gun, right?
It's a communal gun. Carmine's gonna be holding the firearm.
Well, if it's registered to you and Carmine's holding it, that's still illegal.
Yeah, that's fine in the prison, Bobby, not fine outside the prison.
Carmine's gonna hold his gun, his firearm.
Good, okay, great. Uh, I think that if they're not following your orders to clean up trash down there, then they should be, uh, brought into line if they're prisoners. I don't think that, uh. I think they should listen to you when they're down there. Go on.
Uh, what about in the event that it, uh, an inmate, um, escapes the confines of the sewers? Do I have free rein to go retrieve said inmate?
All right, I'm starting to see a problem with this, actually. Hear about this, the more I don't like it. Forget the trash stuff, Bobby. Let's scratch the trash stuff. Can you present the, uh, the recruit, recruit shit that you got?
Yeah, none of them have felonies. We have Gary Kevin.
Okay. All right, I mean, hold on, let me pull up, let me pull up my report, because.
Oh, yeah.
We wrote down your stuff last time.
Yeah.
One second. All right, approved guards.
Alright, approved guards. Okay, go ahead.
Gary Kevin, you need a state ID?
You already put that one last time. Could keep going.
Scotty Bard.
And Bobby, these are ones you would like to hire, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Scotty's the fuck guy. Please take him.
Yeah, yeah, you can have him. Uh, he's been warned he cannot
Okay.
pro, uh, claim that he is licensed with medical because that, you know, transcends the prison, but if he does medical in there, I can stop him, fuck.
Anybody else?
He was recording my feet earlier. Oh, that was the one with the video, wasn't it?
Villager?
Bill Adger.
Well, we call him Pilliger in Dogtown.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Angry.
Alright, next.
We have, uh, Chastanisberg. I don't, I don't know how to pronounce his full name.
Chastanisberg Andersonas Bergensen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I hate the Dutch.
My God.
Anybody else?
We have a Richard White Q, I think. Weird they spelt last.
It's gorgeous. Please take him.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta rest my eyes for a couple of minutes, guys.
Then we have, uh, we have a few more, but, uh, if we can only have, uh, six or if we only have a set amount. We do have a few, a few more names. You wanna know those names?
Uh, you want more names in general?
Well, uh, these are just like, if we have a baseline that we, uh, if we have a set number that we can only hire certain, uh.
Yes.
Who, who's, who's approved? Who, who are people you, you would like to have considered that past, you're like, whatever?
Um, Carmella, but she has a felony which might be a problem.
Yes, uh, what's? Wha- what's her felony?
It's reckless evading.
She has two times reckless evading.
Okay, anybody else?
Uh, Pigeon, he doesn't have any felonies. A cat tearing over.
He's also a doctor, that motherfucker. He hasn't worked once. Piece of shit.
Oh, that's not a good sign. Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Lily Dubois, I think that's her last name. She, she fucking, she creepy.
Okay, anybody else?
Then, an old man named Rusty Bumblebear. Out of all those names, I think Carmella's the only one with a felony.
Uh, Bobby, I'm obligated at this time to suggest, even though he does not qualify, Erwin Dundee for undisclosed reasons.
Hey, you know what? Yeah, yeah, Erwin Dundee. Yeah, put that one in there.
He's got like seven times attempted murder of a government employee.
Yeah, that's.
He kidnapped me to say this.
I wanna, what about Leonardo Slacks? I wanna go ahead, I wanna recommend him. Leonardo Sl- Leo Slacks. Uh, put him on the list.
Does he know he's going on the list, Bobby? Cause I'm gonna message him right now.
No, no, it, it's, it's gonna be surprised. You know, I think that he needs to change his career. No, just in case he gets fired or something, he can always, uh, he can always have dog.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, that's it.
Alright, I've got, uh, all those people recorded. Guess we'll go ahead and hire your first batch of, uh, people that you approved, which should be Gary, Scotty, Winslow, Bill, Adger, Chastanisberg, you know, the Dutch guy, and then Richard White Q, White Key or whatever.
Thank you so much, Supreme Ruler.
Uh, Chief Justice, Bobby.
You don't think Supreme Ruler sounds better?
I mean, it's cool, which is not accurate, but, you know, whatever. Um, okay. Uh, did you have anything else from DOC? I know the mayor's kinda resting his eyes, but.
Um, I, I was, uh, one, we had a lifer up there who goes by the name of Lou Myers. Is there any, uh, paperwork on that man?
Who?
His name is Lou Myers. I recently got an MDT profile made for him. But he, he's been in there for like twenty-some years, he told me. But I just don't know if, uh, I don't really know what he did. He told me that he killed a bunch of people, but I don't know if that's true. What's the name?
Lou Myers.
I don't recognize him as.
Yeah, not me either.
I mean, Dakota, is that name ringing any bells?
No, I think it's a very long, long-serving.
That's who the lifer lifers.
That's a lifelifer.
Alright. I'm a circus, not my monkeys.
Yep.
Alright, yeah, alright, I'm gonna let Bobby out.
Thanks, Bobby.
Have a nice day, Supreme Justice Overlord Ruler of the world, Shadow Leader.
Alright.
Oh, my God.
Co Baron of Dogtown.
Um, question, are we able to do anything about these situations with the food stalls?
Uh, what do you mean situation? Are you talking about like, there's like problems with them?
Uh, no, no, not like, not like the, the issues with, but more like, um, how they're rented. Um, like, right now, somebody can literally camp out in the admin office, wake up, rent one for two weeks. But then all of them are gone in one storm and anybody else in another storm has no chance of ever getting it. So, I was wondering if maybe we could rethink that and do like maybe the old market stalls back in the day where they're rented for a storm instead. That way it gives people in, you know, other schedules a chance. And can we limit the amount of stalls that people can rent? Because people are renting.
People are not renting multiple.
As a rumor and not true.
So Alexander River doesn't have two stalls?
I have checked the records and every time this has been brought to me, it has not been true. I will check again.
Okay. No, no, I mean, if you've already checked, then yeah, th- this is just what was, uh, what was relayed to me as, uh, so I wanted to bring it forward, but.
I heard people are selling ammo and shit out of those. That's crazy. You can just get a sandwich with a side of a box of ammo.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if something has changed, but initially when they came out, there was a wave of panic about somebody rented all the stalls and that was not the case then and I heard another wave of it and I checked in and the answer still was no, so.
Well, given it's Alexander River, he likes to talk a lot of shit, too. So he could just be telling people that and they're just taking his word for it, so.
Yeah, as far as I know, that is not the case.
Okay, alright.
But he also told everyone that Crane and the government were gonna give group six workers guns.
Exactly.
When he in fact just bought one using his PD weapons license.
Yep.
Then he lost his job. Hell, no.
So maybe I wouldn't trust him on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get that. But, uh, I, I think, uh, I don't know, it, finding a solution to allow people of differing schedules a chance would also maybe be something we could possibly look into, um. Cause as it stands right now, it's just the same people over and over again, taking all of them and nobody else has a, a shot at all.
Uh, it's something. I mean, I don't know if that would come from us. I think that's probably.
That's all I was saying.
Something we could recommend.
We can do, okay.
I mean, we could just make legislate, I don't know. Yeah, I would, that's something we need to talk about, but I'll, uh, I'll run the chain you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, please.
I think that's, uh, that is needed.
Felony littering.
There's your felony.
Abandonment of any industrial equipment such as tractor trailers, et cetera.
Okay.
That works.
Now, would this be just a fine or are we giving them points on their license?
Yeah, I don't know if it should be a felony. I was kinda just grandstanding.
I would push for not a felony, personally.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it's.
Yeah, no.
Uh, let's see.
I mean, you, you just call it like, what, uh, industrial littering or? I don't know what you're actually, yeah, industrial littering and then, you know, we just make it a relevant time and fi- and I think, I think our current, uh, application is good. It just needs to be used more. Uh, I think a thousand dollars and four points is like very, uh, ha- should have a chilling deterrent effect. If those charges are used, I think that is plenty to deserve people.
Uh, shouldn't they be commercial littering, if anything, or is that just the same?
Commercial, that works, yeah.
Yeah, it works.
As for the fine, I don't know. I just did a thousand because I felt like that wasn't.
I think, I think that has a chilling effect. I think a thousand dollars and, you know.
Four points.
Two to four points. Well, it's not a moving violation, so.
The existing commercial charges are twelve fifty.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's what the enhancement.
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I see the original in the, in the penal code, in the backend anyway, when I'm editing the charges, so.
Got it.
Uh. Yeah, I think a thousand dollars makes sense as the base for the fine. I'm just trying to question the concept of, of the points because it does demonstrate a lack of responsibility when it comes to operating large commercial vehicle. Uh, but it is not necessarily a moving violation.
So. We'll go with two?
Well, I don't know if it should be any.
Oh.
I, I think that's fair, honestly. It's like, um, it's like separate to their driving, right?
It has nothing to do with your driving ability. You're just a dickhead, right?
If you catch them driving at insane speeds back down after they've dropped it off, then fuck yeah, uh, but, you know, yeah.
I mean, but some of these are, are, you know, they they cause like very hazardous conditions.
But, but again, that's not.
Are.
Points are a reflection of uh, of how you've driven on the road in the past in a way that has broken the standard, right? So either by, you know, driving too fast or in the wrong lanes, turn signals, you know, on, um, ignoring, you know, police vehicles, all that kind of stuff, right? But you, you, there's an area in my head where I could find someone who drives perfectly fine, but just is an asshole who dumps the trail wherever they want when they're done with it.
Have these only been found on the side of the road? Have any of these made their way into the road?
Uh, I mean.
Now, if you, if you told me that someone detached the trailer while moving and just let it fucking, you know, fall or whatever, then I could see that as a moving violation. I'd say that's covered under the unsafe, you know, enhancement, right?
Right.
And maybe even reckless, you know, driver or something of that. Uh, but I think just, if we just found a trailer on the side of the road and you saw someone ditch it and then they pulled back on the road and they drove away in the speed limit and in the right lane, uh, I don't think they should get points on their license.
They, okay, they dumped them because that means they can make it down to the city quicker, so obviously they're not, not keeping the speed limit. That is the primary reason for them to doing it in the first place. Also, yes, Dakota, to answer your question, they have been nudged into the road and have caused chaos usually up north.
Yes.
Yeah, but that falls under one of those like.
But that's, that's not on, on them, but they're leaving them in a, in a place that can cause these issues with this, which is a primary problem. It's not just littering. It's also.
Yeah.
How much do they, how much do they make for transporting that load?
It depends on how long they go. Do they wanna be legal or do they wanna be not?
Okay, no, 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 I'm asking, uh, normal versus without the thing.
Oh, I don't fucking know.
Like, what's the time, right?
It's, it's a min-max thing. It's about.
Oh, I'm, well, that's what I'm doing. I'm gonna break it down. So if, wait, let me call Marlo.
Yeah, I know. I actually counted, God, when I went up, when I went home the other night, I think I passed like ten on the side of the road, on either side of the gas station.
Hey, Marlo.
Fucking gross.
Uh, just need some data from you, uh, for a council here. Uh, how long does it take you to do the big run with the trailer? No, 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 let me rephrase this. How long does it take you to do the big run with the trailer? If you don't dump the trailer in Polito or on the side of the road and you bring it all the way back? And you drive like, you know, eh, let's say, and you drive as fast as you can? Sure, sure. Maybe, I'm not sure, but, but let me just ask you this. Let's say it's not much slower, okay? Okay, and how much do you, uh, how, and what's, what's the total runtime on average?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just upfront, which.
No, I mean, in my, in minutes, how long is a run?
Uh, no, I'm coming in.
Oh, for the full run? Wow, okay, I didn't know that. Okay, uh. And how much do you get paid for that run?
Leaving a trailer on the side of the road is negligent, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that we probably have the charges to handle it and from talking to Marlo, uh, I think that actually, it's probably even more efficient for them to do it in the truck stop parking lot than on the side of the road. Cause they're at the truck stop anyway, so probably save them time. They might have to back in somewhere, I don't know. But it doesn't sound like they save much time. I was thinking we could like, set the fine to be proportional enough so that it's not worth the time you save, but you don't save enough time for it to be relevant, so it sounds like people are just doing it to do it.
Uh, when you say the truck stop, do you mean the gas station in Polito? Like the large one, okay.
And it has, it has large parking spaces there.
Do we know how many of those trucks go?
Like, there are, there are trailers that locals park there.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I know that, but I'm, now I'm thinking like, if this happens X amount of times a day, is that gonna be overflowing with vehicles close to gas pumps?
Well, that's why I said they could use the chicken factory parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
That thing's gigantic and I've never once in, you know, nine years seen that thing filled ever, so.
True. Yeah, cause there's the ga- the charging stations now in the parking lot of the Polito gas station, so. It's not, mm, and that's.
I mean, maybe, maybe just encourage the, the officers to look at this overall, right? And the other, the other question is like, Marlo just texted me, I never thought of this. Uh, is it something where that could be become part of the tow ecosystem?
I don't know if they can tow them. The issue is also there's no information on the trailers. You have to do an.
Uh, so you don't know, yeah.
Yeah, we tried to go up there and look and we couldn't get a, a reading on them.
You have to do an, uh, like make.
Got it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, then, yeah, I'm open to suggestions. It seems like kind of a hard problem to tackle, um. I think overall, we, we solved most of this stuff with commercial vehicles by encouraging PD to use the law we already put in about unsafe operation because, you know, a thousand dollars and four points is game-changing. Uh, I mean, that's a lot.
Speaking, speaking of which, uh, the other charge.
Um, yeah, there's some issues with that. I, I need to talk to.
How would you articulate that?
Well, so here's the problem.
Cause I, I, I'm sorry, I had Matt Rhodes yesterday, fucking Jesus Christ, man.
Oh, yeah, he loves that. That's his favorite thing, yeah.
He, he wasn't sure how to do it.
Well, no, but that's the problem is, is, I mean, he's usually good at finding, using the niche things. Um, so here's the problem. Uh, I was under the impression when the, uh, law was put in that there was like a threshold whereby it was safe to ca- that coincided with the space of the truck. Uh, but apparently, uh, you can only see the contract weight for the current contract. And so if they've already picked up the stuff for like two other contracts and they accept a third, the contract limit that's displayed on the manifest paperwork is for the third only. So by that logic, the you're only allowed to do one pickup at a time, doing any kind of commercial delivery work, which is nonsense going dumb. Because no one's going to drive to a place, pick up one thing with a gigantic truck and then go to another place and depot it without the efficiency of picking up multiple things at once. What I'm what I was trying to control was it being overweight, which I don't know is even really possible.
It it is possible. One, two, um, my wife and I did a ride along.
Yeah.
For grime and we we discovered essentially that it is possible for these big semi drivers to um do a bunch of different contracts and not technically be in breach of any one of the cargo manifests that they're issued. So long as they're so long as they are careful about what sort of cargo they're picking up. For example, they don't take two electronics contracts, therefore they won't ever be in the in breach of the one hundred, one thousand KG uh, weight limit. Uh, and the way that I advise cops to be able to enforce it when I when I talked about it was, hey, you know, if you spot check these these cargo holds and there's one thousand, if there's more than one thousand kilograms of one type of cargo, then they are in breach of this particular law. That's what we discovered.
Yeah, I I so I understand. Well, and and this is what I'm trying to point out is uh, I envisioned that there was a overall weight limit in the truck. And there was a certain proportionality of that weight limit that was safe. And so, you know, I don't know. I didn't know if that was a couple of contracts you were allowed to carry or two or three or four, whatever.
Well, you 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 are well within your right as chief justice to be like, hey, okay, fuck this weird cargo manifest should, you know, i- i- if this truck has more than eighty percent of uh, its maximum weight, then it's too unsafe to drive on the road. Boom, done.
Yeah, I think that's probably easier to enforce. But I don't know what. Like, I I would really like to know, and maybe you guys can ask Marlo, or maybe I'll ask him during the week to get me some info. Maybe if they could just record all the contracts they pick up and tell me how much weight is in each contract. And that way, because because my big concern is I want there to be choice, right? So.
Yeah.
If you pick up four contracts and they weigh a thousand each and your trailer holds seven, you know, K. Well, clearly, like, you know, you know, if it was, you know, twenty, thirty percent, you know, you you clearly would only pick up four or five instead of the seven, right? And anything above that, you go over. What I don't want is the weight limit to be like in the middle of a contract weight. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because then it gets weird about, well, you know, is under and.
Yeah, um, I I recommend calling Marlo and asking.
Okay, I'll get some data from Marlo and I'll bring a proposal next week that resolves the issue. Because I I think I agree with you that the the that law has never been really functional.
Yeah. Uh, it technically is functional. It's just.
Right. It's just nonsensically functional. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like math functional, not logic.
Uh, in the interim, I mean, the person who this probably matters to the most, uh, Matt Rhodes, I did instruct him on the uh proper way to actually articulate this in the in the meanwhile.
Yeah, I'll I'll talk to Rhodes. I'll talk tomorrow. I'll get a, you know, recommendation from the user base, so to speak, and I'll bring a proposal.
Word. Uh, anything else, Mike?
Hmm, no, that's it.
Okay, so we decided that illegal dumping equals uh unsafe operation of a wide load or a commercial vehicle. Um, uh, my darling wife, the chief of staff.
Uh, yeah, updated the death penalty legislation, part seventeen, whatever it is that we've been working on it for. Um, based on like some feedback, Michael and I were talking about this and uh, you know, our, we had concerns about it being in Bolingbrook prior with like doctors. But it came to my attention recently that Tanner is already operating as like a DOC doctor for them. So they're already doctors that are entering.
Oh, he's not a, he's not a doctor.
He's a psych, technically, right?
Yeah, no.
He's just a psych or whatever.
Yeah, he couldn't do that.
Um, there was somebody else I cannot remember, Amori, who had, I want to say, I might be wrong.
Intern. Uh, doctors are not authorized to go to prison, no.
I'm just gonna say this right now. Uh, as far as I know, and Kenner can back me up on this if I'm correct, uh, it is a hard and fast rule and will be so that doctors cannot operate outside the prison.
Yes.
Yeah. Inside the prison? Sorry, you mean?
No, cannot operate out. That's actually a funny. That's a funny Freudian slip. Cannot be operated outside the hospital.
There we go. Okay. All right, all right.
Yeah, straight from the top on that one.
Yeah. It cannot operate outside of their prison. How about that?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So there is no way for them to call time of death anywhere else outside of the hospital.
They would have to be transported um after the fact, which we we need to do, you know, we need to prepare their body and things and everything. So they should be transported anyway, ideally, but.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, so that is that that's not an issue then, if they just need to be transported after the fact either way?
No, that's totally fine. Yeah, if they have to be transported, that's okay.
So what if we allowed the things to occur within the prison and anybody, you know, who steps foot in there does so with the full understanding of what that means per our other legislation regarding the prison?
On a fundamental level, I I still have the same objections I've I've had. If prison's supposed to be this lawless black hole of Bobby and Carmine's domain, I I don't know how we do any official legal function in there.
Oh, this is gonna sound crazy. Let Bobby and Carmine do it.
They they could do it already is what I'm saying. We don't need to legislate it. Like, they they could.
Didn't we? I feel like we had this exact conversation last time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It feels like we've, yeah.
I'm saying if our version of the death penalty is they're never getting out of Bolingbrook, I I I think that's fine. I I think if we're gonna legislate how people die, though, that that has to occur outside the prison.
Why don't we just sell pay-per-view tickets somewhere else?
That was the initial page was the initial homepage doing at the Vinewood Bowl, but people didn't like that.
Yeah, but.
People hated it.
I said.
The we.
He's talking about tickets for like a broadcast.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the reason it was hated at, uh, also you're whispering at it. The reason it was hated at a Vinewood Bowl is because we uh, we're talking specifically about uh, letting people do two, like a like a mutual combat to the death. That's like, that is where we.
Oh, no, my 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 commentary about the Vinewood Bolden was not the combat to the death. It was about the fact that holding a public event like that outside is impossible because it will inevitably be grenaded, you know.
Yeah.
AK sprayed terrorist, you know, oil tanker exploded, you know, name or pick.
Yeah.
Uh, we just need a better spot for something like this, I think. Um, maybe like a rooftop. So I don't know. I don't know.
Because it was a a public execution, right? That's what y'all are discussing.
Yeah, so we don't need to. We don't need to get hung up so much on the location right now. Uh, just the fact that the uh death penalty can be used as a capital punishment. Is that something that we are all in super agreement with and that with with the uh with the knowledge that we will find a suitable location for something like this in the future so that the public can come and it will also hopefully be protected from outside AK spray slash grenade throwing?
Yeah.
Uh, I can think of a couple of locations. It just might be a logistics nightmare, but I mean, for example, that the casino was finished construction a couple of weeks ago. A magnificent building. I I know that more construction is coming. So uh, the who knows, maybe there will eventually be a place where uh it will be uh feasible.
Okay, hell, yeah. I'm all for it. I think uh I think if people are being put to death, uh, they deserve a level of, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we already have.
Fuck it.
Is 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 death penalty already established?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's already a potential punishment. Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Well, the method hasn't been.
It's not codified yet.
That's what I meant. Yeah.
It's just always been done.
Because we, because in, well, no, what I mean is is that we have charges that are hot charges and we have, you know, capital punishment options because the sentencing is indeterminate. It is up to, you know, the judge, right? So technically, we have it. It's just it has not been exercised and thus the actual parameters have not been developed.
Okay.
So uh, that would be a good thing to codify would be the methods by which people are executed. And or which crimes qualify, but I think that's already laid out with the.
I think that, yeah, I think the capital level crime is already codified.
We've already got all that. Yeah.
Language in there too about educated by a judge, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so it's just how it's it's how it's uh.
Exactly.
Carried out and where.
This little document actually says that. I don't know if you guys are actually, I I see Philip in here.
Oh, yes.
Um, this document lays that out and uh with my wife and uh Michael and I talked about last night is.
Kyle Brad, you are so fucking loud. Shut up.
He's still just as loud as always.
You motherfucker.
Is it bad that I'm actually used to that sound?
I mean, I I don't mind. I just don't want people to get distracted. So.
Oh, yeah.
The the purpose of this would be to establish these three methods of death penalty and to also, and this is important, um, give the discretionary choice of death row inmate, uh, give them the choice uh that they will be executed by the state.
I thought they already got that. Was that the one we had in the past?
Well, I mean, once again, it's not codified.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. What I'm I'm asking Shavon to refresh my memory.
Yeah, they had.
Okay, yeah, that's what we already had. Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with it.
Codifying it. Yeah.
We just added an option.
Yeah, we just added the burning of the stake.
Ah.
What?
Which I, if someone picks it, I mean, you know, it's their right.
Can't we both talk? That's how we'd want to go?
Exactly.
That should be an option.
That's how.
Shudders and pagan.
So that that's what I was talking about with my wife last night. I was like, listen, man. This is potential, like the implication of that's potentially really bad, but.
Discretionary choice of the death row inmate.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they choose that that's how they want.
Where is the stake?
Problem with it. Um, not in someone's front yard.
True.
Not that, okay.
Oh, my god.
No, we're thinking like witches and all that, you know, the the normal.
Yeah, right. But still, I mean, I'm I'm just pointing out.
Taylor Swift song.
Even if the pyre is simply a puddle of gasoline, the person stands and we ignite it. You know, I still need to, yeah, we need to figure that out.
Cough them and shackle their ankles and yeah.
Yes.
That's kind of fucked, but it, yeah. Perfect. There you go.
Uh, is there anything that we're not willing to entertain as far as death penalty that they would potentially pick just to get out in front of that or is that?
Well, that's why we are codifying these three specific options.
I like the uh, what's that one? I I forget whether it was Vikings or Native Americans did it. Uh, they basically put you in a like a canoe.
Yeah.
Uh, what like tied to the to the baseboards. So you're you're face down. You're you're on your back, your back down.
Vikings.
You're looking straight up and then they put like honey and shit all over you. Oh, it was Romans. It was Roman. You put honey and shit all over you. Yeah. And then uh the birds come and just eat you alive.
Yeah, that's not Roman as fuck.
Holy fuck.
I thought you were gonna say completely different.
Fire arrow. That's.
No, no, no.
Birds or bugs.
You get, yeah, no, you get tied on your back and then they put shit on you that attracts pests and animals.
Definitely sounds very Roman.
That one's fun.
And then you just get eaten by the birds and pests and all that.
They put a rat in a bucket on your stomach and then they light a fire on the other side so the rat burrows into your stomach.
Way out. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one.
Yep.
Love that movie.
Oh, my.
Could also just chain them to a rock and let murder kitties get them.
That's that's two face. That's too simple. Not from writing or.
All in favor or rather all in not favor. Sorry, meaning some non guys. I had some bucket.
I may just read the actual language, but I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it's their choice. Let them have it.
Yeah, whatever. Sounds good to me.
Okay, um, squeaky chair. Uh, chief of staff, do you have anything else to present?
Um, that was all that I had. I know you you got stuff. Right?
Uh, sidebar. I come before you today. Not as a man. Not as a mayor. But a concerned citizen. Recently, some of you may have realized that a particular plague has taken to our streets. Are any of you familiar with the clown war?
Oh, god, yes. They keep fucking battling it out at the hospital.
Yeah.
It's clear that these two factions have begun allowing their their previous conflict to spill over into the streets into sacred places like the uh Crusade Medical Hospital, disrupting medical care for others. I've seen these motherfuckers towing helicopters. Uh, and in fact, someone left a dead mime with his entrails cut out at the top of City Hall or at the top of the stairs of City Hall.
Very grim.
That's metal.
He was. That ace. Jesus.
I think it's important that we as council members remember we possess the power to legislate. And in the past, there have been instances of the thing that I'm about to propose in order to curtail certain behaviors on the street. Some of you may recall that Alan Crane mentioned, in fact, that he had a particular arc in which he uh was a vampire hunter. Alan Crane, vampire slayer.
Hmm.
Um, I was in prison for that, so I don't really recall that. Actually, maybe I wasn't. However, it's clear to see that the majority of people, uh, I'm proposing that the council of eight support the majority in this conflict. It's not a brave suggestion. Indeed, some might call it a safe suggestion. However, what I propose today is not too radical, nay. In fact, I think it's the next logical step to ensure that the streets can finally know peace. I wish to legislate that every single mime that enters into Los Santos not be treated as human and not have rights.
That is not where I thought that was going.
Wow, okay.
I thought you were proposing clown hunting season.
Oh, my god.
No, no.
Quite the contrary, because there's.
Wait, what if we do alternate seasons? What if there's six months of the year where you can buy a license to hunt clowns and you can bag one clown like per week, maybe?
What?
And then the other six months of the year, you get a license to hunt mimes and you can do the same. You pay like a premium.
How about this? We we see where the clown population is at after this first phase. However, I know I know for a fact there's like literally just like three mimes causing all this shit.
I had a mime almost stabbed me at Mosley's, so.
They are a bit insane. Yeah.
A mime almost stabbed me at Senior Buns. They're crazy.
They are.
One could argue that the sentience of a mime is in question because what makes us sentient? Our ability to communicate. And if they're communicating like animals, should they be treated as humans?
Well, there's.
Wait, hold on.
You know what? Never mind. Let's roll with it. Let's roll with it.
I'm gonna say.
Terry Shively, you're fucking hard on.
Are we saying that people who are deaf and communicate with sign language are not human?
Oh, boy.
No, just.
Malcolm, just moms, just just just.
Yeah, in this case, just.
People actually go through a lot of speech therapy, but to be able to articulate uh 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 and speak, even though it's difficult for them.
I had a dream once that a parent who was a speech pathologist and I felt like I had to say that.
Nah, just mine, guys.
Just moms. Okay.
Just moms, just moms. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm in full agreement. Mimes are a menace.
All in favor of removing? Wait, we're sorry, go on.
I I just have a couple of questions here. Did we say that the only person who showed up dead is a mime, though?
Yeah, but you know, who knows what that mime did to antagonize them?
I'm just gonna say I was with uh Captain Slacks when a mime viciously attacked officers as well. You know, they are a real menace.
Important note, there's a difference between playing charades and using an entirely different sign language to communicate. Mimes do not use sign language. They simply do shit like this. Fucking motherfucking. You know what I'm saying? Anyway.
Does that one mean?
Uh, it means they're happy. Okay, so.
Okay.
Fuck mimes. Uh, I personally would be cool with them not having rights. Uh, so I bring this to you, Council of Eight. Let's bring peace back to these streets, yo. Thank you.
You know, uh. You know, uh. It's not a new concept, honestly.
It's not. We did have.
Peace by genocide has been tried many times, many places.
Oh, my god.
Okay, not that part.
Well, no, I mean, legit, there is a legitimate argument. I mean, hey, uh, you know, because it's the age old question, right? It's like, let's say you've had a country where there's two factions that have been warring back and forth and.
My god.
You know, uh, one faction, you know, has control at this time, but then another faction had another time, right? And it flips every like couple of years. Well, if you just pick a time to go in as a peacekeeping force and enforce the law of one faction, then you're you're just kind of choosing an arbitrary, you know, point in the sand of which to justify their authority, right? I mean, it's kind of the same thing here, right?
Uh, yes, well.
So, yeah, state sponsored genocide, I'm down.
I abstain. I've never done that before.
I tried to produce the damn legislation before, so you know.
I'm scared.
Okay, any any nays or abstainers?
I I would like the the clowns to be lumped in with. I would like both of them to have no rights personally.
Oh, my god.
Oh, my god, no, 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 no.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Um, as mayor, I am I am uh I am bringing this to the table in order to represent. Uh, they actually represent a large uh portion of Los Santos.
They do.
Um.
They do, yeah.
So what we what we can do, you know, if we help them get rid of their mortal enemy, right? We see where they go. And if they if they end up being a larger menace than they were before, I am one hundred percent down to uh, you know, maybe even the playing field in the.
Why don't we make it a twofer? Mimes are hereby, you know, second-class citizens, whatever, right? We agree with that.
Okay.
But uh clowns who are in debt and get arrested must convert all their fine into extra time.
Oh, my god.
Uh.
Let's 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 focus on the mimes. Let's focus on the mimes. Come on.
Who? Okay, you know what? I think I'm gonna abstain as well.
Um. This act's sole purpose is to remove rights from mimes and to make them second-class citizens as written. Who is in favor? Raise your hand.
I I have one more question.
Hmm.
What is the definition of a mime?
Uh, someone who wears, okay, I uh.
Because I could see a lot of people uh walking up to someone and shooting them and saying, oh, uh, you know, they wave their hands in front of my face.
Yeah, that it was my concern with the like uh the Dan Kill on site stuff and things like what, you know, you're opening up the field to, they could just say, I thought it was a Dan. I thought it was a mime.
So he here's what I wrote. A mime is someone who gesticulates and does not communicate verbally. Furthermore, they are dressed like a traditional mime.
So are we talking uh traditional as in the black and white striped shirt?
Yeah, or just some variation of that. Like sometimes they have like a red hat, you know, like it's it's pretty obviously a mime when you look at them.
Or the gray man.
Oh, yeah, he applied to be a doctor, uh, but we had to tell him that you kind of need to be able to communicate.
That something wonders, right?
Treating them. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that that guy's a felon also.
Oh, yeah, that tracks.
Yeah.
Well, the only violent phones can be doctors.
He was a violent felon.
I feel I feel like as a doctor, I probably shouldn't be voting.
Wow.
Yeah, that guy's a fucking menace. I totally agree with that one.
Judiciary will be able to do sniff test it. You'll know it when you see it.
Yeah. Oh, uh, hey, Roman.
Yeah, I I I'll I'll defer to the rest of you. Uh, as a doctor, I just don't feel like I should be voting on this.
Okay.
I still would, I'm just.
Hold on, you're you're a treasurer, not a doctor in this room.
Well, yes, but.
That could make a paralegal's career, okay?
Where where is where is the benefit to the economy?
I don't know. Um.
I think.
Hmm.
You saw mine hunting myself.
Wasted on the.
I'll 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 tell you exactly how this benefits.
Mime hunting season. Mime hunting season.
Um, we could give passes. Um, also. Certainly finished swallowing that meeting more non. Um. Basically, every ti- every time someone is incarcerated in Bowling Brook, it costs the state money. Do you guys know that?
Yeah.
And if they're dead, they don't cost the state money because they won't be in prison for doing all the crazy shit they've been doing.
Oh.
That's.
Penny saved as a penny earned.
For.
Hey, Max, do you know what self sabotage means?
Uh, no. Are you going to explain it to me in like a like a smarmy, like I'm an old eighty-year-old guy way right now? Is that what is that what's going on?
No, I thought I thought the joke was self-heavening. Never mind.
Well, yeah, cuz you cuz you cuz you you said it out loud and then said, hey, Max, do you know what this is? Because I just said something and it was like, he was like, ha, owned, got him.
Yeah, what did I say? Uh, hey, Max, do you know what the definition of self sabotage is?
That was a really good impression, Ben.
That was actually really good, yeah.
Mayor asked me to explain the joke.
Any nays?
Uh, I'm gonna have to be a nay.
Why?
Oh.
Tell us why, Dakota.
Uh, because I'm picturing a scenario
Mm-hmm.
where someone is abducted at gunpoint and then they're taken to a clothing store.
Hmm.
And they are given very explicit instructions on what outfit to put on and what face paint to put on. And then they're taken to another location in which they are executed. And then I'm told this was a mime.
Yo, what, bro, what if, okay, for a moment, someone kidnapped me and they were like, hey, um, I'm gonna take you to the gun store and I'm gonna put this gun on you after I shoot a guy and then I'm gonna shoot you and then I'm gonna leave you in an alleyway somewhere. And then what if the guy also had like a nuclear uh detonation key activation? And he like put it in my hand and then like made me push the red button that that launched the nuke that killed everyone in the fucking world and started like the worldwide nuclear war? What if, what if someone kidnapped me and then made me um?
What are we talking about?
Human trafficking. Max, that's just human trafficking. What Mo you suggested is human trafficking.
This this what-if kidnapping argument is so fucking lame, dude. I'm sorry. Why do we, why do we?
But it happens.
It does not happen! It does not happen, motherfucker!
Wait, hold on, what are we talking about?
It's something like that.
The situation that you articulated in Mo is human trafficking? Right? And I would it would only be the PD to do an investigation, wouldn't it?
I keep being told we can't trust the PD to do things like that, so no.
I mean, we can have it both ways.
We can, we can.
So it's. I'm saying we can have it both ways. We can't have faith in our public servants and then not have faith in them.
Yeah, I got you.
I would say if someone is uh gonna dedicate their life to being a mime, that should be very noted in their public profile. Very noted.
Sure. Make them register.
Oh, my god. I can't. I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
And the shark has been jumped, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm abstaining, um. You guys, you guys have your, I will not say no to it.
We actually came full circle. I made a joke about Max doing this like at the first meeting.
Yeah.
What meeting?
The first one where we were talking about old people and I said, yeah, you know, we should register all of them that are over seventy-five and make them wear like a, you know.
Let's let's be clear. I think mimes are subhuman. I think they should have to register and I think they should be allowed to be shot on the street for being mimes. There's no, there's no, ooh, 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 this is, this is weird. But that's literally what I'm saying. Any nayers?
I I'm still gonna be a nay.
Walton?
Same.
Uh, Kanter?
Uh, I abstain.
Alan Crane?
Uh. If we if we're good at defining what a mime is and someone who is a mime knows they're a mime and there's no way to, you know, muddy the water, then yeah, I don't care. I don't like mimes.
Let's make a registry. Uh, Etta?
Abstain.
They're they're gone.
Michael? Go for it. Um. Siobhan?
You already know.
Say it for the record.
Yay.
Yay.
All right, tied up, so the mayor's vote carries.
Yeah.
And now mimes aren't people. Hooray!
Good job.
I'll make the uh the mime registry now. We can have uh judges handle it or even me. Actually, I can make notes on people's profiles, so. Cool, I'll do that after this meeting. Um, I don't have anything else to present, so I think we're done. Question mark?
I just have a general question. So I I see in here like this sheriff selection thing. Is this just part of the police continuity plan or is this uh is this like a fed thing? Okay.
Um, yeah, a little bit, a little bit of both, we'll say.
Alright, fair enough.
Uh, we're just gathering our thoughts on that. Um. The many cops have spoken to me and they want, th- th- this is how they envision an election for sheriff, okay? And I don't necessarily disagree with them, okay? Uh, run concurrent with actual like elections for like the city council and stuff and mayor. Uh, it has to be a former cop. Uh, the writing here says former sheriff. Uh, that's not happening. I'll say that right now.
Yeah, I think it should be a current cop. That was my only hangup on it.
Current cop, not former.
And that that's just because this was like an early draft of that particular legislation. Um, or not like the, just for record keeping sake, that's how we're gonna do it. Um. It basically, it would happen at the same time as all other elections and then, you know, it would have to be a current cop and then, you know, a- any public person could vote for that. Uh, because that's typically how sheriffs are elected everywhere else. Uh, and I think it's a cool, I think it's a cool idea personally. Um.
Okay.
There are, there are a couple of things that need to be done before we start this process, though. Mainly, uh, there's no functional police department in the county for them right now.
Um, signups start for this uh in three days. So do you, or maybe it should not run at the same cycle as the city council.
Um, we could have them start and like start getting like their organization set up. Um, and all that stuff. So a- and there's another problem too. Okay, oh, my fucking god. You guys good? Hey, tell them to shut the fuck up. Thanks.
It's a, not not to interrupt your train of thought, Max, but in in theory, if if you're not wanting to push this out the door right away, it could line up with the civilian oversight board elections, whenever those are, since those are already off kilter.
Um, I think, no, those happened fairly recently and this will be, i- i- it, this will be a need to be on its own cycle. Let's just put it that way because it's, it's probably not ready for the next three days. Uh, because if we and maybe Max and I can talk about this later, but basically, I'm just thinking through. I don't want to put pressure on the construction crews being like, hey, we elected a sheriff and then the sheriff's gonna like go to Max and be like, where's my building? Uh, I think we should probably be more uh responsible and say, okay, we will uh get word, you know, to the construction folks that we intend to hire a sheriff, get a reasonable expected date of when the building could be ready and then center the elections around that timeframe. I think that's probably more responsible.
Yeah, so a- and alternatively, what we could do is we could say, hey, uh, you're gonna be sheriff of the county sheriff's office, whatever it's gonna be called. Um, whoever gets elected and we're gonna be like, hey, you can do this and this can happen, but you need to understand that you might be operating out of MRPD for the next foreseeable future. You know what I'm saying? And also, there there is a slight chain of command issue that needs to be cleared up, you know, like who does the sheriff answer to?
Exactly, that's another issue.
So we we gotta work out all of this shit before we uh begin doing sheriff stuff, which it's possible we get it done in three days, but.
Highly doubtful.
Yeah, uh, I will be working on that, uh, cuz I I wanna talk to Barrick and I wanna talk to Ruby and I wanna talk uh to the state and then we gotta figure out, you know, like who who is gonna be doing what, like, you know, like, are are the sheriff's underlings going to answer to LSPD High Command? You know, like, like, there are a lot of questions that need to be answered first.
Right.
Yeah, uh, okay, so yeah, some hybrid of what we just discussed is probably fair. Uh, we could, you know, how about we do this? How about we take what you're saying where you do all the groundwork, right? Uh, and we officially tell the PD that a sheriff is coming and thus we are trying to figure out all the parameters for the job first. Uh, and then use that as a way to buy time for the construction.
Uh, sounds good. I like that plan.
So I will uh uh with you uh try to get a timeline together and then uh you, you know, you and uh your team can exercise your state authority to communicate with the PD and get information.
Sounds freaking good. Sounds freaking good.
Alright.
Uh, Crane, we gotta, uh, my wife and I wanna talk to you.
Okay.
Uh, after this meeting, I I don't think we have anything else to present. At all. So, I mean, good meeting, everyone. Fuck mimes, yo.
Alright.
Fuck moms.
Uh, I will, I will write up the uh the registry. Um. Uh, we'll have clerks and uh judges be able to register a mime as a mime.
Yes.
Okay.
Blah, blah, blah. Okay. Also, Dakota, if you see any mimes on the street, bring them to a judge and make them register.